All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil Link. I am Coach Ashley. We're joined today by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everybody. We're glad you're here.
Super excited to have you guys here today. We're covering a really important topic that I just don't think gets covered enough. A lot of us think we do this, but we aren't actually doing this. Or perhaps what we're doing is not quite hitting the mark. And sometimes we don't do it at all because it's a little scary. And what I'm talking about, you guys, is following up, all right? This is one of the most profitable activities you can undertake in your business. You should be doing it on a regular basis. This, of course, follows showing and inviting. But it's a very, very important thing to do. And today, we're going to get into all the details of how. And also show you some ways that you can have a system supporting your business that allows you to never drop the ball and never be stressed out about how you go about following up with people. All right. So as you're coming in, go ahead and say hello in the chat. Super, super excited to see you guys. Lots of familiar faces here today. Excuse me. I am in, I am based here in Brooklyn, New York, where I am actually wearing a jacket today. It was in the 60s yesterday. Insane. Almost was end of June. Greg, how is Fargo?
I think we got that cold snap here, too. It's a little chilly, highs in the 60s, but I think there's warmer weather on the horizon.
Crazy, crazy, crazy. Well, I'm sure we can count on it being sweltering here in a couple of weeks when we head over to Salt Lake City. Just so you guys know, we will be at Aroma Sharing for the convention in Salt Lake City in mid-July. So if you're planning on going, definitely make sure you come over and see our booth at Aroma Sharing. All right. So we've got, just to give you guys a little bit of housekeeping, if this is your first time here, welcome. This is a weekly call that we offer to anyone building a business with Young Living. You don't have to be a member of our Get Oil Link community. However, if you would like to be, we welcome you. You can start with us for $1 for your first month, get all the tools, everything that you need to grow your Young Living business, basically everything but the virtual office that Young Living provides you. You got it all here with us, and we'll show you how to use it. We have these live calls here for you where we can train on topics like today. We're talking about following up. This will benefit anyone in Young Living today, what we're, what we're sharing with you. But then we also go into greater depth on how you can actually use the Get Oil Link system as well. We are going to have some Q and A today. So if you have any questions that you would like to have covered, we will do our best to cover all of them. Go ahead and hit that Q and A button if you're watching us live here and enter your question there. And we will address them as we can and most likely at the end of our call today. So without further ado, let me get to sharing with you guys. Got some slides prepared and we will get on with our training.
And there's the screen.
Beautiful. All right, great. So today, the fortune is in the follow-up. How many of you guys have heard that before? It is so, so true. The fortune really is in the follow-up because that's where the yeses are. Did you know that it takes on average four to six and sometimes more exposures for someone to say yes? And if we aren't following up after we've shown someone once, we are leaving opportunity on the table, significant opportunity and, of course, life-changing information for the people that you want to share with and residual income for you, right? All right. So let's get into this. The fortune's in the follow-up. Want to welcome you guys again. Excited to see you all here today. Definitely do leave your questions in the Q and A box. First, I want to ask you guys a question. A quick question here. You can respond in the chat. How many follow-up calls have you made this week? Be honest. It can be zero. How many follow-up calls have you made this week to prospects as we are sitting here on Thursday? Seen any numbers come in?
Yeah, we see a couple just came across. Zero, none are the two we've gotten so far.
Okay, all right. Yeah. So we're going to change that today. All right. So listen, following up, you guys, it's the one thing that we don't do enough of that can bring us the greatest results. The one thing. Obviously, we could all stand to show more, to share more, to invite more, of course. But this is the one thing that we all have an opportunity to do. We've all shown or shared at least once, right? Following up is one of the most important things you can do for your business. And the fact is, is that a no that you get today is very rarely ever a no forever. It can take four to six, and if you are new at this, it could take even more exposures for the average prospect to join and to start buying from you and to start building with you at least four to six times is the average for this industry. How many of you are actually following up four to six times with people? I'll tell you a secret. You actually don't necessarily have to follow up four to six times if you do the right things first. And you are going to learn what those things are on today's training. So here's my promise to you. If you follow these steps that I'm going to share with you today with every prospect and you do this consistently, you will see a 50% increase in your current new enrollment rate over the next six months. If you can commit to showing enough and then follow these steps for follow-up, you will see an increase in signups because the fact is, guys, if you are showing and sharing and you're not following up, you're missing out on that 50% or more of growth that could be happening in your business. All right. So today, here's what we're going to learn. First, you're going to learn how to set yourself up for success with follow-ups. Okay, there's more to this than just reaching out and asking someone what they thought about what they saw, which is actually something you shouldn't be doing. You're going to learn what it really means to follow up. What are the steps that you follow? What are the things that you say? What are the things that you do to make sure this is working for your business correctly? You're also going to learn how to follow up and close. We're going to do a training in the future on closing, but this, we really can't teach following up without giving you some specific language around closing to help you. You're also going to learn three ways to use your Get Oil Link contact manager to increase your signups and productivity, all right? Now, before we even get to follow-ups, you have to understand that you need to have a system in place for sharing, right? A system, and this is really, really very simple. It doesn't even require tech. A system just means that you do the exact same thing every single time you perform a specific action in your business. So it means that when you share, you do the same thing each time. It means that when you have, when you have a local event or a trade show, you do the exact same thing each time, right? Those are systems. So we need to establish a system for sharing. So if you saw last week's training on, excuse me, on, on sharing and growing, you're going to see, and we'll actually link below for you guys watching the recording later. We'll put a link to what I'm referencing here in the video. If you saw last week's training, then you know that you need to have three things on hand at all times. Oh, the training specifically was called how to, how to get four new members every week, right? The three things that you need to have in place are, one, an upcoming live event that you can invite to, something that's in person, or obviously your availability to sit down with someone one-on-one privately if that opportunity is available. Number two, an online live event. So this can be a call that's hosted by someone in your upline that covers products and opportunity. It could be something that you are hosting. Have something that's online that you can invite to. And then finally, having a recording of a live presentation that you could share with someone as well so that you always, 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 when you invite, have a way to get somebody to watch something inside of 24 to 48 hours or commit to sitting down and being present for a presentation inside of that frame of time. There we go. Again, there's our live in person, live online, and recorded online. Having one of those is okay. Having three, all of these is ideal because that means when you invite, you always walk away with a guaranteed exposure. All right. So when you get a yes, I will review information. Make sure that you set, agree to, and confirm a date and time for it, okay? So when you ask someone if they would give you 20 minutes of their time or if they would come to a live presentation that you're hosting, when they say yes, set, agree to, and confirm the date and time for it. Take out a calendar, have them take out theirs, or you send them a calendar invite. Don't keep this nebulous. Be super specific. At this date and this time, at this place, we are going to do this together, okay? That's so important and something most of us skip. So this, before you even get to the follow-up, you have to make sure that you're setting accountability for the exposure, right? Make sure that you're doing that if you want your follow-ups to be successful. All right. And then, of course, you require this person who says, yes, I will review your information. You require that they acknowledge and confirm their commitment to you. This is no different than if you were to go see a health practitioner, right? If you're going to go to a massage therapist and you make an appointment, you're going to show up and they're going to confirm that you're going to show up, right? If you go to a doctor, same thing. You go to a lawyer, same thing. People need to treat you with the same kind of respect that they would treat anyone else in business. So respectfully ask that they confirm, okay? Get specific. Have them confirm. All right. Along those lines of establishing that system for sharing, you also want to reach out. And I'm giving you an example here. You can reach out to a friend to invite them to a class, a live in-person, local, maybe you're doing a one-on-one class or a make and take or something like that locally. Invite them to the class that you're giving next Thursday. They can't make it Thursday. They got a thing. No problem. Invite them to your online class on Saturday. There you go. Oh, hey, busy Thursday. No big deal. Got a thing Saturday. Oh, and it's online. You can come in your jammies. Cool? No. Oh, busy Saturday, too. No big deal. You got 20 minutes right now? I got something to show you. See what I mean? Have those three things available. You've always got a way to share. Follow-ups are successful when people have actually seen something, right? So always make sure that you're prepared for people to see. They need something to see, and you need to be able to confirm that they can in as soon a timeframe as possible. All right. So you've got your live event, local or online. And if you can't follow up with this person immediately afterward to collect a decision, schedule a time right then for a call or a meeting within the next 24 to 48 hours, right? So let's just say that your friend did say yes to your live event on Thursday that's local or your live event that is online on Saturday. They aren't able to follow up with you and sit down with you and talk about what they saw immediately after they attended the class online or local, schedule the time right then. So this is what we used to say when I first started building, our acronym was BAMFAM. Book a meeting from a meeting. So whenever you have a meeting with someone, whether that's one-on-one, online in a group, or local in a group, you're always booking another meeting from that meeting. And with your prospect, if you can't sit down with them and answer their questions and ask them questions so that they can share with you what their interests are, maybe even what their objections are, then you set the date and time for that follow-up, okay? Schedule it right then. Don't put it off and say, oh, we'll do it tomorrow because you won't do it, and they won't either, right? Take the opportunity when it's there or it will disappear. All right. So schedule a time right then for a call or a meeting within the next 48 hours. All right. So you have immediate or scheduled online sharing. So this would be if, if your friend isn't available to come to your local class on Thursday or your online class on Saturday, this is where you're going to be showing them a video of a recording that is maybe of you giving a presentation or it could be someone, you know, you're a diamond or crown diamond or even just your direct upline, no matter what rank they are, giving a presentation about Young Living that you are going to share online, long distance, or whatever with someone that you know. So if you have an opportunity immediately to do so, you share with them or you're setting up a date that's convenient for them where they're going to get in a call with you and receive information, then they're going to review it and so on. This is how this goes down. Setting yourself up again with systems for sharing for success. First, if you're going to share information online, if you are going to share a website, if you're going to share a video link, a sway, a whatever that you expect someone to review and then make a decision as to whether or not they're ready to get started, get their PSK, get onto ER, do not, do not, do not, do not email, text, or direct message a link for their review, okay? You don't give up the goods until you have received a commitment to review and follow up with you. This is really important, really, really, really important. It would be like your doctor saying, you know, hey, listen, just go to WebMD, look around, you know, read up the symptoms and then, you know, and then, and then I'll just, I'll prescribe you whatever, you know, whatever you think. I'll prescribe you medicine, you know, based on whatever it is that you think you have. That's that same way of thinking. It doesn't make sense, right? You're not going to just give someone information to peruse on their own. You're going to give them information inside of a set area of a defined set of circumstances because this is your business and you're inviting them to have a look at your business. And so they're going to do things your way, all right? Can't stress this enough. If you give somebody a link and say, hey, give it a look when you give it, when you have a chance, they're not going to seriously do it, right? And they're definitely not going to do it in such a way that they'll give you a meaningful decision or even meaningful thought toward it at any real point in time. So if you want attention given to what you have to offer and you want people to make a decision based on what they see, you need to set the circumstances. And how you go about doing that is first, obviously, you set that appointment. You either say, hey, what are you doing right now here in the next 20 minutes? And they say, I'm free right now. You say, okay, I'm going to call you. Or hey, here, click this link. Let's get on a Zoom call, which you can do from inside your Get Oil Link back office, by the way. You can get on a Zoom meeting immediately. You can get on the phone immediately. Or you can say, oh, hey, after work, 6:30, give me a call. All right. So either way, you get on the phone or you get on your Zoom and then you share the link while they're on the phone or on Zoom with you, okay? Then you share the link with them. You either remain on the call with them or on the Zoom with them or you confirm that they are going to answer your call when you get back to them in 20 minutes. If it's a 20-minute video or, you know, if you give them 20 minutes to read over some information or whatever so that you can answer any questions that they might have, okay? That's your long distance. This is, again, this is setting yourself up for successful follow-ups. You have to make sure that the parameters around sharing are met. Make sure that they get the information while you are with them, present with them, okay? And then you give them the time to review. You're either on the phone while they, while they hit play and you watch the video together, right? If it's a video, or you give them 20 minutes and they read over. Maybe you stay on the phone. Maybe you don't. That's your, up to you. Doesn't matter one way or another. And then you say, okay, I'm going to call you back in 20 minutes. You're going to pick up, right? Okay, cool. I'll call you back in 20 minutes and we'll talk about what you've just seen, okay? All right. Now that you know what it means to set yourself up for the follow-up, right? To share effectively, specifically, guys, meaning you have set dates and times and parameters. This is not a pushy thing to do. This is a professional thing to do. And it's something that you deserve to do for your business and honestly, for your prospects because they need you to lead them, right? They need your expertise on Young Living and how to navigate this new world of, of getting rid of things that are toxic in their lives and their homes and, and replacing them with essential oil products. So don't be afraid to lead. And that's exactly what you're doing when you're setting things up like this with these parameters. All right. So here's what it really means for you to follow up. First, if you've done your homework, which if you saw our training on how to get four new members per week, we talked a lot about the kinds of questions that you need to be asking and the fact that getting yeses, right, getting more signups is totally, totally dependent upon you asking more of the right questions so that you know what the person you're speaking to needs, so that you know what kind of help they're looking for and so that you can better position Young Living to fit their needs in a way that they would understand, right? So if you've done your homework and you've asked the questions and you've listened for the problems that this person needs your help to solve and you've set expectations clearly, meaning that you're sharing something that will help them solve that problem that they've shared with you and you'll do so at a specific date and time, right? So now you know that they have this problem they want to solve. They know that you are someone who can help them do it. You have set a date and time to review information that could help them solve that problem. You have then presented your material, right? Whether they've come to a live class, an online class, or a recording, if you've presented material to them in a way that holds that person accountable for their attention and their response to you, remember, setting that date on the calendar and the time and confirming how you're going to be following up, right? And then you're meeting on that mutually agreed upon time and setting to discuss their questions and next steps, right? So those, this is the follow-up. This is, if you're doing anything other than all of this, we are not completely following up, right? So first, ask the questions. Make sure you've got the context. Second, set the expectations. This is how we're going to look at the information that is going to help you solve this problem. You've presented the information in such a way that they know that their next step means to sit down with you at a specific date and time to review information, all right? Here's what following up isn't. It's not texting or direct messaging. Hey, did you check out that website I sent you, right? It's not texting. It's not direct messaging. It is only calling. It is only calling or meeting directly. It's also not a generalized getting back to, right? This is very, this whole strategy is, is very dependent on you having a specific knowledge and connection to a problem that the person that you're sharing this with wants to solve, right? So this isn't like, hey, let's, you know, let's get back and talk about that very, very general information I sent you. No, you are getting back with this person to discuss the specific action steps to help them solve a problem, right? This isn't, hey, let me show you my business because that elicits a so what response from people. You are sharing with them a means to solve a problem that they have shared with you, all right? Also, following up is not asking for someone else's approval or opinion. That's not what we're here for. You are here to help others with what you know and the products that you have access to and are a distributor for. If they're not for someone, that's fine. You are not here for their approval, right? And you don't require it. And you definitely don't need anyone's opinions either. What you are here to do is to help someone solve a problem and to determine whether or not your solution is a fit for that person right now or not. And it's also not a wide-open Q and A session, right? Again, if you're going in and you've done that homework and you understand what the problem is that you want to help someone solve, then you don't have to worry about, you know, just a broad, you know, question about everything, right? You don't have to pick everything apart for someone to make a $160 decision to solve a big problem that they have shared with you that they have in their life. The cost of not solving the problem that they've shared with you is much likely far greater than any amount of money that they would put down to get started with their first month on Essential Awards and getting their premium starter kit, right? So make sure that you are approaching this with a seriousness and with the expectation of seriousness from another person that you are sitting down with a very specific thing to do, just solve the problem. All right. Now, have you guys picked up just how important scheduling is in the context of all of this? One of the most important things that you have to do at every single step, probably the most important thing you have to do at every single step of this process, aside from listening, right? That's the most important thing you can do. The most important thing you can do, aside from that, is scheduling, is saying, hey, I've got something that I'd like to show you. I think it'll help you with that problem you've shared with me. And they say, yeah, great. I'd love to. And then you say, it'll take about 20 minutes, or you can say, I'm hosting an event, right? You have a specific date and time. You don't just say, yeah, I'll show it to you someday because someday never happens, right? One of the things that keep us from moving forward as quickly as we could in the growth of our business is our lack of specificity in our actions. We do a whole lot of planning to make things pretty. We do a whole lot of planning to make things feel nice or, you know, or just overthinking, you know, how, how we might approach one thing or another when really all we need to do is ask questions, listen closely, position what we have to solve the problem that was just shared with us and then set a specific date and time to sit down and review information to help that person solve that problem. You are in the business of helping people solve their problems. And you don't really have to do a lot of problem solving. You just have to listen enough to hear where Young Living can slide in as the solution, right? And all you have to do at every step is just make sure that you are setting accountability on a calendar with a specific date and time to meet up with somebody. That is, in the context of follow-up, there is nothing more important than that piece, okay? Have a calendar. It's the one thing that you, you have that you need and that you need to use. Everyone has a calendar right now. You're tuning in from a digital device. It has a calendar on it. Use it for your follow-ups, okay? If you want people to join, to commit and to experience real change, the real change that they can experience in their lives, that their families can experience as a result of using Young Living's products, they have to take this process seriously. And they need you to lead them through it confidently, okay? You are the one who determines how seriously people take this opportunity. And by opportunity, I don't just mean the business. I mean the opportunity to look at your life in a new way and experience the bounty of Young Living and its product lines and what it can do for your body, for your mind, for the wellness of you and your family. You are the one who dictates how seriously people take this opportunity. They will follow your lead if you lead first. All right. If they see a lightly committed person, right? If they see a hobbyist, someone who is really not operating as a business owner, but as a hobbyist, they aren't going to expect or respect the life-changing information that you're about to share with them. Professional business people, keep schedules. So should you. So use that calendar. All right. So I want to talk about how you can follow up and close. My dog is getting into something over there on the bed. Sorry. No, no Wally. Hope he stops. All right. So first, following up and closing. First, you're going to call or meet at the scheduled time that you have set, right? And begin your discussion after the live presentation, of course, if someone has gone to a live presentation locally or online, all right? So that's the, it's our first step here. Call or meet at the scheduled time. And then you want to ask an affirmative, right? So somebody has just reviewed information. Here he is. So somebody has just reviewed information. So this is a class you just gave locally, a class you just gave online or an online presentation that was recorded that they reviewed, okay? You are sitting down together. The first thing that you do is you ask an affirmative. Hey, wasn't that awesome? Or that was pretty cool, right? Pretty amazing, isn't it? Ask an affirmative. Affirmative meaning asking a question that is answered with a yes. There is a science and psychology behind this process. If people say yes, I want to say it's a minimum of three times. The likelihood of their answer being yes when you say, are you ready to get started, goes up exponentially. So ask an affirmative. Hey, that was awesome, wasn't it? Yeah, right? Then you ask them, well, what did you like best about what you saw? Listen to their answer. They're going to tell you what they're interested in and what they want out of this when you ask that question. And then you ask how you see this benefiting yourself or solving the problem that we've talked about, right? So ask them how they see this benefiting them or solving their problem. And then you ask, are you ready to get started, right? Wasn't that awesome? What'd you like best about it? How do you see this benefiting you? Are you ready to get started? Really, really basic, simple questions. You need to be asking all of these every time. Another one that you could also throw in is, and this is before, are you ready to get started? You say, on a scale of one to 10, with one being absolutely not and 10 being, oh, my God, let's do this. Where do you see yourself? And they're going to give you a number. And then you ask, what would it take for you to get from seven to 10 today? And usually, it's just a matter of you answering a couple of questions for them. All right. Screenshot this. Write this down. This is your closing process. I promise you, if you follow this, if you have held accountability, people are taking the information that they're receiving seriously and you follow this series of questions, you will get more than 50% more yeses. You will get all yeses with a just super rare no, like hard no. And then the rest will be And then the rest will be yeses with sign up on a future date that you schedule in the course of this specific conversation. That's how this works. All right? Go over one more time. Ask an affirmative. Wasn't that awesome? What'd you like best? How do you see this benefiting you? On a scale of one to ten, with one being absolutely not, and ten being, oh my God, this is about to change my life. Where do you see yourself? Okay, cool. So you're a seven. So how do you, um, what would you need to know today to take you from a seven to a ten? And then they can share with you, well, uh, you need to talk to, you know, my spouse, or whatever it might be. And I'll get to those here in just a second. Uh, but that's, that's basically it, right? When they give you the number, if they say, I'm a six, right? If, if they're anywhere above a five, then they can get started today or tomorrow, right? Easily. They're ready. They just have a couple of questions. You will very rarely get people who are below a five, if you've done this process correctly. And this is actually someone who has expressed genuine interest and has been genuinely, honestly participating in the process. All right. So you've asked for the close. Are you ready to get started? Right? I need more information. This is an objection that you might get, right? Quick show of hands, how many times have you gotten this one? A lot. I, I need to think about it. I need more information, right? Here's your answer. Understandable. Tell me what you'd like to know more about, so I can help you make the best decision for yourself today. Listen closely to what they say to you. And if you don't have all of the answers right now, schedule a follow-up. Put it on the calendar. Schedule your follow-up with that person. If they want to know something about a specific oil or a product, you can't get an upline, or someone that you know on the phone, and they really feel that that's like a deal breaker situation for them, they need to know about an ingredient or something, and they're like, nope, can't make the call unless I know this thing, which sounds a little silly, right? But say it's the case. Um, then you want to schedule a follow-up. So, hey, no big deal. I can get that answer for you, for you by tomorrow. What's a good time for us to follow up tomorrow so we can get you started? And actually, what I would do at this point in time is I would actually have a paper signup form and go ahead and get all of their information filled out with the promise to send this off after you've got that answer and they find it acceptable. That way, they don't have to think about going through the process. Again, you've already gotten it done. You're set to go. And so once you get confirmation on that answer, game on, we're started, right? Now, here's another objection that you may face in this situation. First, I love it, but I can't sign up today. Don't have the money, payday's next Tuesday, whatever the case might be, right? That's okay. When do you see yourself being able to take the next steps to solve the problem that you've shared with me? Right? So if they've told you that, um, that they're really looking to, you know, to get into some lifestyle changes, to help balance, you know, balance their hormones and, and feel more rested, and so on and so forth. Say, okay, no, it's totally fine. You're not ready right now. When do you see yourself being ready to, you know, to, to make the changes that you need to, you know, to have that energy and, 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 and live more vibrantly? When do you want to see that happen? So you take that question, or you take rather their answer. You take that bit of homework that you did at the outset, asking questions, figuring out what this person is really looking for. And when they say, ah, I don't know, I don't think I can do it today. It's usually not because they can't do it today. A money excuse is very rarely ever truly actually a money thing, right? Um, it usually has a lot more to do with internal questions than mindset issues and things like that. So all you have to do is go back to the source. Go back to the reason why you were having this conversation, the reason why you shared Young Living with them in the first place, to help them solve a problem. When would they like to have that done? Let them answer. Listen closely, right? Because it may actually be that it's not really a money thing. It may not be exactly what they're saying. You have to listen. Um, and then, of course, schedule a follow-up. Stay accountable. Date and time, set it up, right? So if they say, look, I am just absolutely overwhelmed with, you know, with homeschooling, and, you know, we're not quite done, the school year's not wrapped up yet, and I've got this thing, and I've got that thing. I don't see myself being able to meaningfully really give this what it needs until, you know, and, and until October. Okay. No, that's totally fine. Tell you what, um, let's go ahead and set a date and time. Um, let's see, October, what, second at three o'clock? How does that work for you? Let's go ahead and put that down. Right? Schedule that follow-up. And then, of course, especially if it's an extended period of time in between, continue to invite that person to experience the product and to experience the knowledge that you have in the classes and the educational offerings that are available up until that date and time. All right. So here's another one. I need to talk to my spouse or my partner. Totally get it. I don't expect you to be able to explain all of this stuff to your spouse yourself. So let's go ahead and set up a time where the three of us can talk, and I can answer any questions that they have. All right. So they're in, but they're like, yeah, I gotta talk to the partner. Totally fine. Let's set up a time for the three of us. Listen closely to what they're saying. They may, you know, they may talk about some potential issues that may arise that you need to listen to. And then, of course, schedule that follow-up. Put it on the calendar. All right. Now, let's talk about what happens when people say they're going to do something, and then they don't, right? So maybe you have an online appointment, maybe you have an in-person appointment, maybe they said they were going to come to a class, right? And they didn't. So again, this is barring that you have done all of the steps that have been recommended up until this point, uh, having the conversation, not being passive about it, um, and, and having someone say, I'm going to meet you at this date and this time. I can tell you first, if you have followed the steps and the training up until this point, you're going to see that it's actually quite rare that people don't show. I will put that out there. But let's talk about what we do if they don't. All right. So first, at the time of your appointment, so let's just say that somebody was at a class of yours, and you were going to follow up the next day, and they committed to a date and time with you. So at the time of the appointment, when they haven't shown, you call with a gentle reminder of the time that they've committed to you, and leave a message reminding them that you had an appointment, and you'll be available, you know, here for the next half hour. Right? So give them the opportunity to have made a mistake, maybe forgotten, overbooked, or what have you, and just provide a gentle reminder, hey, we had, you know, we had an appointment at this time. Um, you know, just want to let you know, I'm, I'm here for the next half hour. Look forward to talking with you. Okay? So just a quick courtesy. Now, if they didn't return your call, twenty-four hours later, you call again out of genuine concern for their well-being, right? Leave a message inquiring if they're okay. Let them know that you hope everything is all right with them. Because who knows? Maybe there was an emergency, something could have happened, right? So this, this now isn't just like, okay, I was, you know, we had an appointment, maybe they're late, whatever. Now it's, gosh, did, did something happen to you? Are you okay? Right? Call them out of genuine concern. Leave a message asking them if they're okay. By this point in time, you guys, if somebody has committed to sit down with you and review information, and twenty-four hours later, after you left that voicemail, and they haven't picked up, or they haven't called you, either something actually has happened, you know, uh, which, you know, hopefully it, it didn't. Um, sometimes that's the case. But most of the time, people call back, right? And especially after the second call. I, I can't tell you how many times I've had people go, okay, I'm so sorry. Like, I, I really want to do this, like, as a business, and I'm kind of nervous about it, and, um, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Because now they see that, like, you know, if they're ghosting you, if they're avoiding you. Now they kind of feel like a jerk, because you're actually concerned for their well-being, because they blew you off for twenty-four hours, right? So starting out right away, gentle reminder, hey, got an appointment, give me a call, I'm here for thirty minutes. Next one, hey, are you all right? Super hope you're okay. Okay? Now, forty-eight hours later. Take it off the table. Guys, in my experience, I've done this hundreds of times. In the rare instance that there actually has been some kind of an emergency that's come up, somebody's going to call you within twenty-four hours if they're accountable, right? So, and, and, and you want accountable around you, right? Okay. So forty-eight hours later, take it off the table. Hey, we had an appointment at such and such date and time a couple of days ago, and I missed you. Called to check in a couple of times to see if you're okay, and haven't heard back from you after leaving several messages. So it seems like what we've discussed may not be right for you, and that's okay. I just don't want to waste any more of your time or mine. So this will be the last time that I reach out to you about this. And again, I really hope you're okay. Talk soon. All right. Take it off the table. If somebody, if, if you have followed up twice, like, you schedule a date and time, blow you off, don't return two calls, take it off the table. Again, most people will have gotten back to you by this point. This is an extreme example. If you have done your homework and you have set everything up to where you have set date and time and accountability with this other person that you're following up with, you are very rarely, rarely, rarely ever going to have to leave this message for someone. Okay? I think in, in literally, guys, hundreds of calls that I have made in my career, I may have made this specific call, left this message twice. Okay? This is not going to happen often, but this is how you deal when people are not accountable. All right. Now, what about the people that you've already shown, right? Because I know a lot of you guys have already shared, right? But we, we admit that we're not necessarily following up in the way that we need to. First, reach out, like brand new, right? And follow the system. So reach out and start having a conversation. Explore the different means by which you can find a door to open that Young Living can go into, right? So what are the problems that they're dealing with? What are the ways that you can help them? And then, of course, follow that process. And set up a new show, a new share, a new invitation, and follow the process from there. If you showed them online already, right? If you shared an event with them online that they attended, or they watched a video, or reviewed a webpage, invite them to a local event. If you're giving another talk in the community, invite them to that. If you're hosting a make and take, invite. Get in touch with anyone that you've already shown that hasn't said yes yet, and ask more questions, so you both understand how they can be helped by you. Now, I want you to notice, you guys, there's a couple of things that I actually haven't covered today. First, when you put the system in place, you aren't going to get ghosted or blown off, right? When, when you follow the steps and you establish accountability from the outset, people tend to do what they say they're going to do. You also won't get silly objections about pricing or certain geometric shapes. This was, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of us, because network marketing, um, is a dynamic industry, a storied industry, and those stories, uh, they vary widely, right? Um, we know how reputable this company and its products and its leadership is, but that's not the perception of the industry as a whole, right? So I'm sure, I mean, maybe just quick show of hands, people here today, how many of you have gotten the, oh, it's one of those things objections? Yeah. Right? So the thing is, when you go about this process differently, when you approach this as a consultant, right? As someone who is able to help someone solve a problem, as someone who is working as a professional, who expects others to be accountable to them, like they would be accountable to their massage therapist, or their doctor, or their attorney, you don't get silly questions anymore. You get substantive responses, and you get people showing up and treating you like a business owner, because you are treating your business like a business, right? All right. So you also don't ever need to chase anyone ever again, right? So one of the questions that I've gotten before is, well, how many times should I follow up? Well, if you are setting up accountability, if you are scheduling, right? And scheduling specific dates and times that you share and that you follow up, you don't chase anymore, because you set those dates and times, and if they don't show, you give them one chance. Maybe they're late. You give them another chance. Oh, maybe, maybe something happened. And then game over. Move on. Next, right? You don't have to chase anyone ever again. People will be more accountable to you, and your business will grow way more easily as a result. All right. So are you seeing, guys, are you seeing how this can increase your signups into your business? I know we, we went through a lot today, and I look forward to answering any of the questions that you have. Uh, quick show of hands, are you seeing how this can help you get more enrollments into your business? Fabulous. All right. So now we are going to look at how you can create the systems that you need to do this. And we're going to flip over here to our guru in chief, Greg Kilwin, uh, so he could show us how to set up, um, the ways that we can use GetOiling to follow up. And I'll show you really quickly. We'll talk about them, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll see them on Greg's screen. So first, uh, there's a thing that we have called follow-up plans. If you aren't currently using this, it is a, just a best kept secret of this platform to help you design the functions and systems in your business, unique to your needs, your, your specific requirements, so that you can make sure that on any given day, you're doing exactly what you need to do based on what's going on in your business right now. You need to follow up with Leslie on Tuesday, and Suzie on Thursday, and you've got these things coming up for this event, and that, you know, that vendor event, and this online thing. You can run all of that like gangbusters in a quarter of the time that you would normally spend planning and trying to figure out what to do if you use these follow-up plans correctly. Not kidding. Super powerful. All right. So these are basically internal prompts that keep you on track, so you never miss an opportunity. Greg's going to show you how to do that. Um, also, we have our contact manager. This is a core foundational piece of the GetOiling platform. This is where you enter your contact information, you add notes, uh, so that you know what's going on. If they've got objections, if there is, you know, a specific need that they need addressed. You can put that there. You can assign follow-up plans, that first thing we talked about there, so that you can make sure that you're following up with them when you plan to, right? And then, of course, you can rate your contacts, so that you know every time you log in, you've got like, you know, four people who are super hot prospects, who are ready to make a decision, so you know where to focus your attention. And then, of course, we also have Zoom meetings, two-way texting, and emailing either bulk or direct, available for you in your system to reach out, follow up, send information, and so on. All right. So Greg, you want to take it away? We're going to demo these fantastic features of our system.
Sure. Oh, I see my share didn't work, right? Let's try that again. Not, okay. Let's try this. I've had this before. Yeah. Yeah, normally puts that little green box around the screen that I'm sharing. Um, but it's not doing that. It's probably my having too many windows open. Okay, it looks like I took it that time, did that?
There it is.
Okay, cool. All right. So follow-up plans, those are, I'll just show you how to make them first. They're tucked under the settings menu over here on contacts. Um, oh, and one other quick thing I wanted to point out. So this is something I think we messaged about before, but like, if you click over here in this little help icon, and you're wondering how to do anything, you can just type stuff in there, like follow-up plans, there it is. Boom, you're going to get some help on it. So I thought I popped that, or, uh, mentioned that. Um, but actually, to go back to the demo here, so under contact settings, follow-up plans. And then you can create one. There's a few that we have built into GetOiling, and then you can, uh, create your own. Um, you can click create, and actually, probably what I'll do is I'll just go, um, you know, creating them, just as simple as entering a name, and then you get to a list, and I'll just hop to one that's already been made. So it, uh, kind of streamlines it a little bit. But you can see here, this one's got, uh, four steps in it. Every, it looks like sixty days, there's something going on. A, a check-in reminder, this must be a, uh, based on the name of it. I, I assume this is the six month or so. I don't know, have been a nine-month, uh, plan to get to silver, so, um, you know, anyway, check in with a builder, basically. But so that, you know, that's one interesting option there. Um, you know, new member follow-up plan, event follow-up plan, event preparation checklist, all sorts of things these can be used. Basically, you choose how many days after, so when you add a follow-up plan, it's sort of like a campaign. Based on the day that you added, this is how many days after that this reminder will pop up in your to-do list on your contact. So once you've created a follow-up plan, you can add it to contacts. You can also add it to events, that's a different topic, but today we're really talking more about contacts. So you add it to the contact, uh, and then sixty, it'll put a reminder, in this case, sixty days from now, to say, oh, this is our two-month check-in to silver, you know, a hundred and twenty days, four months, and so on. Um, so really, you can streamline it that way, and you can even do this in bulk. So if you, you know, if you make a bunch of phone calls one day, um, because I know people like to batch operate, or, you know, operate in batches, I've, I've heard that before, uh, especially when we beta tested the Digital Upline Coach. People are like, hey, we just, uh, you know, we do all our work and calls and all that, and then we want to go plug it into the system. So they, you know, wanted some sort of bulk. And so, uh, if that's how you operate, you're just going to make a dozen phone calls or whatever, and, and then go plug that into the system. You can, uh, bulk add these as well. So to do that, I'll just like pull up one of my contacts here. So to do that, I'll just like pull up one of my contacts here, I think I've got a test contact in here for myself. And if you want to add the follow-up plan in bulk, oops, I got some contacts, I'll deselect those. You can do that by selecting or filtering, you know, either way. And then under the Actions menu, and I'll just check this one here, under the Actions menu, you'll, there'll be the Add Campaign, Follow-up Plan, Vault or Tags. Click on that and you can, all your follow-up plans will show up in here. So I'm going to put the Silver Builder Follow-up Plan on my own contact and hit Apply. And then it will go through here and create a bunch of to-do items. So what I'll do then, just deselect this and go into my contact and under the To Do area, we're going to have, apparently I've got a bunch of old to-dos in here. If I scroll forward to the modern era here, you can see here the two-month check-in to silver and then we've got our, you know, the rest of them were in here automatically and, you know, based on the current date. These are, you know, this is 60 days out, this one was 120 and so on, and you can kind of see that. So it schedules us out and then those will show up actually on your dashboard and your daily activity email. So you'll be able to get reminded in that specific day, like on here, on October 18th, you're going to end up with a, a reminder in your inbox that says, hey, it's the four-month check-in to silver for Greg here. So go ahead and give him a call or whatever you want to do. So I mean, it's totally flexible there. When you're done, you can just check an item off. Let's just pretend we've gone into the future here and I'll check this box for the, box for the two-month check-in, shows up over here under Past Actions, so you can keep track of that. So yeah, that's, and basically, you know, the, the bulk operation is just to do that. If you want to do it one at a time, you don't have to use the action. I mean, you could use the Action menu, do what I did, check it, check, check that one contact or more than one or, or whatever. But if you want to do that, add that on a contact, you can do that from your To Do panel as well. So you can hit Add right here and then there'll be the follow-up plan on the bottom. I won't add another one, but you know, you could choose it and then hit Add and it'll add it to that contact. So you can do it one at a time, we're in bulk as well. So yeah, and again, that does surface in the dashboard. Of course, I just completed that one, so it's not going to show up here for me, but it would show up under there as well. Oops, not under Add, but it would show up under here as a to-do item if I would jump ahead to whatever date that was and I don't remember that offhand, so.
Some of the ways that you can use this, you guys, like if, if you are, if you're just reaching out to people directly, you would apply a, a follow-up plan to, you know, just to make sure that you've reminded yourself. If you create a follow-up plan, if you're just out inviting and that you want to follow up 24 hours later, then all you have to do is apply that plan. Or if you have had a, if you've had a vendor event and you want to make sure that you are setting up appointments to follow up with everyone that you've met within 24 to 48 hours after that plan or after that event, then you apply the plan to all of the people whose email addresses and names that you upload from that list from your vendor event or, or similar local event, right? So, so you can do that individually or in bulk, as Greg was saying. But this applies to when you're just on Facebook, reaching out and talking to people, when you're making calls, when you are at events, all of the things that you would do. Remember when I said you need to systematize your sharing? This is how you go about doing that, right? You have a thing that you do every single time, so you create a follow-up plan that tells you to do the same things every single time you apply it to a prospect and, and to members as well, if you want to do your care calls. That's another, another setting that we have here.
Cool.
Awesome. So can we show maybe just how we set up a new contact, right? So if we, if there's somebody that we want to share with and they're not in our system yet, maybe they didn't come in through a landing page, how do we go about adding a new contact to our system and what does it look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So you can do that from the Contact Manager, which is under Manage, or you know, I'll just click here to anywhere that you have a list of contacts, there'll be this, excuse me, the Create button over here. You can go ahead and click that and just fill out their, their basic info. And you know, there's a Type field. The rating is really interesting too. That's something we wanted to touch on too. I'll touch on that here in a minute, explain some of these other fields. You can even add a photo, you know, if I go back a page, you can see that I've added this little photo here. Not really of me, but I found a cute little stock photo to drop in there, but you can upload photos for your contact, you know, like go to Facebook or whatever and download their little photo and drop it in there and then you can have a visual reminder of who they are. So anyway, that's all totally optional, really, I think the only, I think you really only need one field here. If all you have is their first and last name, that's all you need to do, especially if it's just a reminder for yourself. Obviously, it's better, you know, in the long run to have email address and phone in there as well, if possible. You can fill out as much or as little of this as you want. If they are a member, drop in their anniversary date. And again, some of this would come from the virtual office, once you, once they are a member and you do an import too. So you can, Background Info is a useful field here. That's like a Notes field, so you can just, you know, kind of surface any information that would be useful to help recall who they are or maybe a recent contact that you've had with them. And some of that will show up in Past Actions too, so you don't want to like clog your background info with detailed information, but you can, but it's really useful for, you know, just like general interest, like, oh, they, I, I learned about them at this event or they're, you know, they've got young children and so they're interested in, in the baby's line, that sort of thing. You can, you can always do something like that. If you want to add a campaign to them or a follow-up plan right away while you're adding them, you can certainly do that. So you just click there and then choose your campaign or follow-up plan and then it'll create the contact and add that for you right away. So I guess that is another way that I didn't cover earlier is when you're adding a contact, you can drop a follow-up plan on them right away, which is great, huge, huge time saver there. Couple of features here, so like the tags is a, you know, you can categorize and organize people here. Tags just pop into existence once you create them. This is just a list of what happens to be on this demo account, but if you want a new tag, you can just literally type it in. My new tag, hit Enter and then boom, there's a new tag, it's just.
Or you could say Facebook prospects, right? Or you could say, you know, vendor event from, you know, June 19th or, right? So you can, you can add those and that actually this, I guess we'll, we'll do the rating while you're still here. We had a question about, someone wants to see how the, the bulk application of follow-up plans works. But since we're here, we can definitely show that rating as well first.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that here quick. So the rating, and there's several places to rate a contact, including like on your dashboard, when you're on the contact itself or when you're adding. When you click on that, it pops up a little box and so in here is how often basically do you want to get reminded? So like, if you, if you don't want to ever get reminded, that's what the default is, zero. And as you move up the scale, the reminders move more clo, you know, closer together. So like you've got an annual reminder, quarterly, monthly, weekly and every three days. And where that shows up on your dashboard, there's a section for, it'll tell you here, I could actually probably rate a contact, but contacts you may wish to reach out to. And of course, you know, if I rate one now, it's not going to show up because then it counts as activity. But it's basically however many days or the amount of time that I was showing you on the rating for the time that's elapsed. So if you have somebody who's, you know, a hot prospect, which is where that number five comes from, and you can do that right from the dashboard here, so I'm going to rate myself here. And again, it's not going to show up because I did something within the last three days. So, but, but it would show up here then eventually once three days has expired. This also shows up in your daily activity email. And so it's a great way to set an auto reminder, you know, without having to go in and create a to-do list every three days or every two days or whatever, and then eventually that runs out. Whereas this is an ongoing reminder, it's like if I haven't done anything through the system with them in three days, in this case, then it's going to remind me, I'm going to get that email reminder. And again, you can dial that back to weekly or monthly or quarterly or whatever. So great for annual check-ins, there's just, you know, a number of different ways to, to use that. That's, I think, kind of a, a nice system for that. And what was, oh yeah, the, the follow-up bulk adding follow-up plans, I think was the other, the other question, so.
So I think that the best way to maybe consider looking at this is, so like, like, let's just say that you had a vendor event or a local class and you took down maybe on paper, names and email addresses. A lot of folks do that, have those signup sheets and then you would enter those in to say like a spreadsheet and then upload them into your Contact Manager. We have lots of tutorials on how to do that in the back office here. And when you upload them, you would put a tag on them like Greg was showing in the contact. You would, when you upload them bulk, in bulk that way, you would have a tag. So you would put the tag as the vendor event and the date, right? And then what you'd do is you'd go over to this, this Contact Manager where Greg is and then you would find them all and apply the plan.
Right, yeah, so we've got to, you know, there's two ways you can apply them. You can filter them down, you can apply to all of them, all your contacts. In this case, I'll show you both ways quick. So like right now, I don't have any contacts selected, so I'll click Filter, oh, sorry, not Filters. Actions is what I wanted to click on and then this Add Campaign, Follow-up Plan, Vault or Tags pops up the box and then I pick a follow-up plan and hit Apply. I won't do that, I've already added that to the one contact, but that's the step that you would take, which would then drop it on all three of them. And it does give you the total up here as well, so it's kind of a safeguard, like before you go, make sure it doesn't say 3,000 contacts if that's not what you want to do. So, you know, I've seen, you know, that, but so like, and the other way is that, let's say you just want to select one, just check it and then you'll see the menu gets a little bit bigger and there's a Selected Contacts section here that pops up. And so you can, you can click that Add Campaign link on that as well. Choose the Follow-up Plan, hit Apply and that will only go to Selected Contacts. Yeah, so let's see, another question here from, Anne, can you show how to bulk invite to an event? I have a group tag and I want to invite them to an event I've set up in the GetOiling system. It seems like a one-by-one invite. Can, can you clarify how to do it in bulk? Sure, are we ready to hop into that or is there any, were there any other?
Actually, let me, let me pop over, well, no, we, we can, we can go ahead and do that real quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so first you just want to find an event or, you know, create one if you don't have one and you want to invite people to it. So I'll just go to the sample event and it sounds like you already have people tagged. So what you'd want to do here is click Invite, like once you've found the event, click the Invite button. And now you can say Filter, choose a tag. I don't know if any of these are going to match, I'll just pretend I'm filtering it down. Okay, cool, there's 15 matches and then hit Invite All. And what that's going to do, I don't know, I think these are all fake email addresses, so I don't have to worry about spamming anyone. I'll click Invite All and then it'll say, would you like to add the 15 contacts to your event? And then hit Okay. Mail all 15 contacts, yes, that sounds great. It should pop up a box, it's going to have the Event Invite link in it. You can modify this however you want to and hit Send, I'm not going to do that. But if I go back to my list by clicking Return to Event now, there should be all sorts of contacts in there. And if you don't remember, there were only like, I think, four invited before, so now I've got however that was. So that's the steps how to do it. You can, you can filter however you want to, once you click the Invite button. So whether it's selecting people or filtering down by tags or what have you, and then there's those buttons on top to invite people. So hopefully that helps out, Anne.
Awesome. Great, and I'll, I'll answer this aloud as well. There was a question about where we find tutorials in the back office. There's a lot of training and help under the Help section, but that progress bar, actually for critical key steps of getting started, that progress bar, there's a video connected to almost every single one of these that shows you how to use them. And they're very quick, right? They're, they're fewer than two and a half minutes long, I think, all of them. And then of course, we have this fabulous new feature down on the bottom right hand of your screen when you're logged in. This little question mark, you tap it and search for help and that'll point you to all kinds of goodies on how to use the system.
Yep, and it does, it should be set up so that it provides relevant help articles for the page that you're on. So if you're on Events, it pops up the Events. If you're on Zoom Meetings, for example, it should, once I come over here, pop up Video Meeting. So yeah, it's all kind of tied into the page that you're on, which is really cool.
Very cool, very cool. All right, I'm going to pop back over for a couple more slides and take any more questions that we have before we close out for the day. All right, so if you don't have a GetOiling Contact Manager yet, it was pretty cool seeing that, that, that live in person, right? Like, wouldn't it be amazing to have a resource like that available for you to organize and make sure that you're staying up on top of your follow-ups and making sure that you are running your business effectively? If you don't have a Contact Manager yet and all of these great tools to grow your business, you can get your follow-up, your tracking system, events management, Zoom Meetings, email, text marketing, everything you need for just a dollar for your first month. So head over to GetOiling.com to get started today and we look forward to working with you and helping you grow your business. We have a commitment to help, what was it, is it 10,000 people hit silver by 2025?
That's our mission, yep.
That's it, that's it. So let us help you get there too. And now we, if we're going to open the floor up for all kinds of Q and A for a few minutes here before we close out. If you guys have any questions, not just about follow-up, we do want to make sure that we have space available every week for you to get help if you are working on something that you're stuck on. If there's something that, that you aren't quite getting with your system or with your marketing, we are excited to help you. So go ahead and pop those questions into the chat, pop them into the Q and A box and we will get with you for as long as we're available to. Ah, Yvonne, that's a great question. I'm in Europe, do you think it's adequate for me? Yes, we are compliant and have multiple, multiple country compliances. Greg, what, how, how would you put that?
Right, yeah, yeah, in Europe, we have, well, we, we've created this website theme we call Global, which basically just has information about Young Living and you can add product pages to it if you want to. But we have many customers in Europe who are using the system. You know, there might be some different local laws, whatever about that, you know, we were aware of like the GDPR and all that and have taken some steps for Europe too. So it's, it's, it's great to use. I mean, email works worldwide and sort of Zoom and, you know, follow-up plans, that's all, it's all great.
That's right, yeah, we've got clients from all, all over the world, everywhere. All right, we have, this is a good question about how our affiliate program works for when we share. So, and that's specifically when you share GetOiling with your team, with your friends. What we do is we actually give, Greg, it's, it's five, it's, I'm sorry, it's half off of your, they get half off their first month, right? And then you get that other half.
Basically, except, you know, well, with the $1, you know, we have the dollar first month. So it's actually half off their first full month. So yeah, it's, it's essentially their second month. So yeah, it's just kind of.
Yeah, half, half the price of the membership level that you refer, you get back as a credit on their second month of, of, of full, full billing. And they would get half off of their first month. So you share a free month.
Basically, yeah, and if they, if they opt for an annual membership, then you still get half off or they, they get half off right away because the annual membership is paid upfront, so. Wait two months for that.
Good question, good question. We got any other ones before we get going? You guys had some really good questions today. If you have any topics that you would like to see covered for trainings in the future, we do this every single week and we are here to serve you and the growth of your business. So feel free, go ahead and drop them here or if you think of it later, send it over to info@getoiling.com and let us know the topics that, that you would like to see covered. If you're watching this later on YouTube, put it in comments. And do go ahead and, you know, like and subscribe and whatnot to our channel. We are youtube.com/getoiling. If this is your first time tuning in, we have an entire playlist. I mean, right now, we're, we're at dozens of hours of value-packed training on how to grow your Young Living business or free on YouTube, youtube.com/getoiling and you can catch those replays. They're, they tend to be very topic-specific, some of them we go a little wider on Q and A and cover lots of things, but they're always valuable and always geared toward helping you grow your business. Fantastic, all right, well, oh, wait, we got one more. We do, so on a, I, on a limited basis, we do have coaching available. It's just going to depend on whether or not our needs align. Go ahead and just shoot us an email over to info@getoiling.com. Sorry, I don't have your name here, otherwise I would address you directly. But send an email over to info@getoiling.com and we can definitely have a conversation about that. But what I can tell you is this, I'm, I'm not a techie and I use this system almost every day, right? We use this system for our own marketing, right? This, this is, this is user-friendly. We have, you know, we, we have, we have grandmas who are crushing it with online marketing. We have self-professed, you know, tech noobs that are building websites. So you'd be surprised what you are capable of doing with some creativity, a little bit of guidance and, and I think most importantly, just the discipline to continue getting good at something worth getting good at. But if you were in a position where you really wanted to say hire out, then, you know, we could definitely explore possibilities and see if we're fit. Awesome. All right, well, if that is it, we are going to get going and we will see you on next week's training. Let me see. Yes, yes, overwhelm is the thing. We actually have a training on that, if you want to check that out on our YouTube channel. All right, oh, there's another good question, our resources, language availability for our resources, Greg?
The, the resources that, you know, like the back office and the. The, the resources that, you know, like the back office and the pre-made websites are all in English, but we have people successfully creating their own website pages, landing pages, and so on in multiple languages.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. All right. With that, we're going to get going. If you have any more questions, feel free to send them our way and we're excited to get back with you. And we will see you on next week's training. Take care. Bye-bye.